There, but there's the smell of the fumes, diesel coming out. That's all I have.
Kevin, you still waiting for the detail sheet?
Yes, we are still waiting for the last few donations to trickle in. I'm expecting the papers to be received this week. At that point in time, we'll have a forepointing of our plans received and all these questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kev, I attended the Halloween event at the high school the other day. It went great. Just please pass on the message to D W. I know Mr. Goodwin's here, they did a great job setting up, but everything went on great.
Yeah, I will do that. I'd also like to recognize what we're at, as well as completely, you know, I think all of our departments really shine that a night.
Yeah, and I hope we can do the same for the Christmas event.
Cool.
Any progress on that corrective action plan that may be completed?
Uh, there's not a lot of plan.
That's going on, it's a lot of missing information, dates were not there, the plans were accurate. I want to get this done some time soon. Let me check it. Steve? May I actually take a look at that part of Mary Nemet?
Yes.
If it was ever memorialized with Mary's senator's name? Do you have anything on that?
I don't believe it was.
Because I'd like to sponsor a revolution to memorialize it for. You know, and the foreclosures, I know we've had a lot of questions about foreclosures. People come here, Braylock, Jefferson, a couple of them. And I know there's been some new legislation. Speaker Prado just came up with some, some addendums to existing legislation that allow us a little more teeth. So what I wanted you to do is, you know, sit if you could and take a look at this with Mr. DiLorenzo and whoever else and Mr. Murphy. Find out, you know, what we can do to possibly start getting those houses out of foreclosure somehow. Or at least get them to maintain the profit without the mess. But the last question I had for you had to do, you know, meeting I went to two weeks ago, the board event, and they were talking about some of the E-rate stuff and some of the other stuff. Do we as a council have any investigative powers at all, you know?
Tom? Say again, please.
Well, I took it to a board event, do we as a council have any investigative powers?
Yes, the council does.
Because I mean, some of the things, we're talking not five million, probably closer to six and a half to seven million dollars.
There's a specific statute that authorizes the governing body to conduct an investigation essentially in any matter that affects the well-being of the town. I'll see to the site, but the committee is included, I don't have time for it right now, but we'll be decided.
Okay, thanks. That's good for me. I'm good.
What's your intention? You want a former committee to investigate the region of the street?
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, Matt?
Yes.
Site is, it's entitled, it's forty one eighty-one, day of sixteen.
Some place where there's no powers involved.
Well, what it says is, is the intention of the subtitle, that the municipal council shall act in all matters as a body, and it is against this here, the subtitle, for any of its members to seek to influence the official acts of the municipal manager or any other officer or to interfere in any way with the performance by such officers of their duties. Nothing herein contained shall prevent the municipal council from appointing committees or commissioners of its own members or citizens to conduct investigations into the conduct of any officer or department or any matter relating to the welfare of the municipality.
So if we see fit, and I think I, I make committees, I could get members of the governing body as well as citizens.
That's correct.
I'm just wondering if we find any wrongdoing, sports, or whatever happens.
We've got that wrong doing.
I know, it's different.
Well, I think the, I think the purpose of the statute is, is multifold. One would be to, to inform the governing body as well as the public, and then if there were any acts that required further investigation by way of forensic accounting, for example, of finances or if criminal behavior were discovered, I think we'd have an obligation at that point to, not to take any further action, but to refer to the county prosecutor or attorney general.
I have a question, let me just say. We can't, we have a monitor in place and we have the Board of Education. Are we going after the Board of Education or are we going after the monitor? I mean, I don't, I don't understand this.
You know, I think what would have to be framed is the area of inquiry. I would strongly recommend that there's not be any, if the governing body's going to do this, that it not be a fishing expedition, but that if there were a particular area of inquiry, it should be noted. As far as I'm aware, the damage was already done, and that's why the monitor is there. But I mean, the statute is kind of broad for any matter relating to the welfare of the municipality.
Well, in your opinion, Tom, can I appoint, besides citizens, in the council, can I appoint a member of the police department in case there is any criminal activity that we can take immediate action on this one?
Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking is based on the language here, and I'm not, since something is kind of picking me up in the poll, the way I am reading this language, subject to further review, is that it appears that the council appoints the committee. I don't think this is a mayor, I don't think this is a Robert's Rules of Order kind of mayor points, so I think that's, I think everybody's going to have to act on this.
Okay. Well, what about the answer with the police department?
Well, at the risk of, I don't want to shoot, shoot him in the hip on this.
Okay.
I really don't. It doesn't, by virtue of an individual's employment as a police officer, that person should not be disqualified.
I think it would be helpful.
It might be helpful. I think what you're probably going to need is outside counsel to guide.
Okay, can you, Steve, I think within the next two weeks of my next meeting, we will make a decision, maybe if we look into a press conference.
I'll take a look at it, but again, I think it would be the right thing to do, and I'm advising you that I believe the appropriate thing to do would be to sharpen the area or areas of inquiry. And then for the governing body as a whole to appoint the committee, whichever committee is going to do this. And properly, simultaneously appoint council.
He lets us know what we can do, we have to find. I mean, one of the areas that caught me off guard is this whole thing, the E-rate and the phones, is basically, at least the board must have been led to believe that Clarity could give them the capabilities of getting the B date through E-rate, but it turns out they weren't part of that, so that to me is a misrepresentation. That's just one of them, that I saw the other day when Mr. D even actually brought that up.
Well, there's a couple of things, again, that's a problem that I'm not familiar with.
Okay.
But I think you do have to be mindful that, you know, the Board of Education and its decision-making process, it's a separate governmental entity, just like you are. But also there's a monitor there, and I guess maybe the monitor would have to be, would be requested to offer some testimony or proofs. I don't, I don't know, not knowing what the focus is going to be, it's hard for me to.
I think what we're trying to find out is where, where did all this money, five million plus another, with the coffee light, it's probably one point five to two million for the computer system.
Well, yeah, again, it's a staggering part of this, to everybody.
Isn't that the monitor should put a look into it?
I don't know what they're doing, I can't, I have no idea.
I would certainly not do this without discussing it with the monitor. But it's clearly something I don't think that requires his approval. I don't think it requires his approval, but I wouldn't do it without insulting, you know, without giving him a heads up as to what, what's going to happen. Remembering, I think the board is in litigation with Clarity now, aren't they? But the authority is there to do this.
Okay. Well, I can't even appoint a committee to look into this, Kevin.
I'm sorry.
I can't even appoint a committee to look into this, Kevin.
Tom's got a little more research.
I think, I think what you, I think what you could do is appoint a committee to look into it. But you can't put it, you yourself can't appoint the committee that's going to be doing the investigation, if that's where you want to go. If that's what the subcommittee wants to recommend. And then I would suggest that the governing body, because that statute leads off with the language, act as a body, that the governing body act as a body and appoint the commissioners. So I'm going to have to see the annotations on this particular law to figure out how exactly, what the mechanics are going to be.
Who else? Communications?
A letter resignation received from Rafael Azada from the Rent Lemonneman Board. B letter resignation from Marge Pringle from the Rent Lemonneman Board. C letter from the Essex County Department of Economic and Welfare to renew an appointment. Division of Housing, Community Development awarded township grants in the amount of two hundred and six thousand for Lauren Street reconstruction and a hundred and twenty-six thousand for more place reconstruction from the Community Development Bronx Grant Program. D W C from a resident of Bell Terrace requesting a stop sign at the intersection of Mayor Street and Mount Proctor Avenue.
Kevin, can you have the police look into that?
Yes. He really did. Yes.
E request we see from J C Promotions Incorporated and Anne Marie Perna for the reinstatement of the monthly flea markets at Development High School.
Are we going to motion, we deny that? A second.
There's a resolution.
You want? It's a request.
Oh, okay.
We accept the request.
She says she, the resolution is something that could be this request?
Aren't the mics working tonight? Is it practically?
No, but you can't talk yet.
Huh?
No, but you can't speak.
But we're supposed to hear.
I'm sorry.
The public is supposed to hear the deliberations of the governing body.
Okay, okay, sorry. Kev, Tom, on this request for the flea market, it's a request.
It's a communication. It's, first of all, there's an ordinance on the books with regard to that regulating it, and secondly, I believe there's a, there's a resolution that's on the agenda tonight to consider modification.
I would draw, we'll wait till the resolution comes up.
Okay.
All right?
Request we see from the Bell Historic Preservation Commission for the appointment of Mike Brown as the Township Honorary Historian.
What? Yeah, so. They already sent, sent a letter, I don't know why these resolutions are on, when, well, like a question.
There's a resolution on it.
There is.
This is from the Bell Historic Preservation Commission.
We need to see if there's an introduction.
No, they're good.
D letter received from a resident of Peak Street requesting a speed bump on the street as Floyd twenty-eight.
No, excuse me. Kevin, I was in Clifton, and they have these little yellow strips across the streets.
Yes.
You know, they're not like the big speed bumps that are around town, but they're pretty effective. Can you look in or call Clifton, see how much they cost, and if you can put them not only on this street, but there's certain, certain other streets that need them. And they don't look expensive at all, and I went over it and it slowed me down.
I can look into that, can we draw back the phone, is that the snowplows? Tell them right off. Well, we can look at it.
All right, this one looks like it was there a long time.
Do it, Jim. Okay.
My only question about that is the paving, and that, when we pave and then we go over it with the snowplows, but we don't dig it back up. And just find out, you know, if they think, and hopefully the plows just go right over.
Then I can mark it out with a brush.
Yeah.
Sorry, Kevin, no warnings for introduction.
Warners number one for introduction and ordinance to amend, chapter four, general license, section one, licensing generally, paragraph nineteen, license required, fees and revised ordinances of the Township of Bell.
Move for introduction.
Second.
Quick, roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction and ordinance to amend, ordinance number thirty-three thirty-three, creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation claims.
Move for introduction.
Second.
Quick, roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Do we have an opportunity to discussion on these?
Not on introduction.
Not introduction. No. No.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble. Ordinance number three for introduction and ordinance to amend in chapter twenty-three, zoning ordinance of the Township of Bell establishing minimum parking spaces exception.
Move for introduction.
Second. Before this move, I have a suggestion, a typographical suggestion to this ordinance that doesn't materially affect it in any way. But if you look at the, I said the fourth line, where it says edge of pavement, that said driveway, and the owner said glowing, proposes to fill in. I'm wondering if the language needs to, or it desires.
Is that a proposal?
Yeah.
What do you want it to be?
Well, just, I don't know. I don't know if the current language is a little clumsy or if my language is clumsy or not.
You want table it?
Pardon me?
You want to table it?
You know something?
I think it's an important thing to introduce.
All right.
I'll check with.
How should we amend it?
Strike the word proposes and make it desire.
That's how it's written.
Pardon me?
That's how it's written.
Proposes, proposes has a connotation that they've got to come before the board to do it, if they.
So you want to strike that?
Change it to desires?
Yeah.
Change it to desires.
Make a motion, open it for amended.
Second.
For introduction.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes.
Ordinance number four for introduction and ordinance to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Bell, chapter eight, day of sixteen, handicap party.
Move for introduction.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes.
What is this for public hearing?
Ordinance number one for public hearing, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the township of Bell in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating one million sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of one million fourteen thousand ninety dollars. Bonds are known to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick, roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes.
Counsel, what are the, what's the capital improvement for this million dollars?
I have the purpose of this Washington Avenue corridor re-idealization of pedestrian safety improvements, including all work and materials necessary. Third, that's worth six hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars. Improvements to the friendly house include all work and materials necessary there for incidental airflow, that's a hundred and forty-three thousand. And the improvements to Silver Lake Firehouse include all work and materials necessary there for incidental airflow, that's worth one million six, oh, sixty-four.
Two hundred and forty-seven thousand. Two forty-seven. Silver Lake Firehouse is two forty-seven.
In total of one million zero six four eight hundred.
And it's six hundred and forty-some odd thousand.
One million sixty-four thousand eight hundred.
What are you doing, I want to hear.
It's the Washington Avenue corridor re-idealization, been used.
Yeah, with the lights and all that.
No, we can't, hey.
I believe it has to do with the lights and some of the other stuff that's going on, the street lighting, updating the street light.
I told public services, don't I?
Well, we have to pay for it.
This, this is just light.
It's the engineering work involving the lighting, the purchasing of the street light, and the installation of the street light, removing the, the lighting in place.
All right, nothing to do with the sidewalks or anything?
No, the sidewalks will be undertaken with the streets, that the state's going to be doing, when they repaint up the sidewalks.
So just to work clear, the whole six hundred and some odd thousand is strictly purchasing insulation and light, light, nothing, yeah, we're not going to be surprised later.
Yes, on the entire three point five miles of Washington Avenue.
Can we, are we going to have a presentation, I mean, you know, this is something that, I'm a property owner and businessman for forty-six years here. Can the public be involved and know what's going on? I mean, I sat up there one time, anything we did, we made a presentation to the public, and said, this is what we're doing, and then invited public input on there.
Okay, I believe there was a presentation given, and it was a special thing from the state, and we'll have another one for you when.
This state presented something, what they're doing on there. But I mean, if you're going to do what kind of lights you're putting up, and because of that, it's up to the council that kind of likes it, you know? That was the meeting, I attended that meeting with the state, I'm asking this council.
We did, we did a presentation a while back, and I'm talking like this is at least six months ago.
And you showed us the type of lighting that you're going to be and all that?
Well, yeah.
Again, I don't think I've listened to the meetings, and I don't recall seeing that.
Okay.
So just a.
I think this was all brought out of a planning board meeting that I attended, showed the type of lighting, et cetera. Mr. Nikolsia was the council representative at the time.
Okay, you know, thank you, but I gotta let you talk on the ordinance only.
Make a motion.
Audio.
Okay.
Make a motion, close public hearings.
Second.
Quick, roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes. Make a motion, open public participation.
Not yet.
Now we got, we got to vote this one, though.
Oh, yeah.
Ordinance number one.
Get that giant scale.
Ordinance number, excuse me, ordinance number one for second and final meeting. Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the township of Bell in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating one million sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of one million fourteen thousand ninety dollars. Bonds are known to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a move, make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
Make a motion, open public participation.
Second.
Quick, roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pimble.
Yes.
Phyllis Fran Dantoni, our prospect there. Last meeting I was at, I asked about school one, what was going on down there, and then after I did the best about Dantoni that you're negotiating with them, I thought that was a done deal, that the property that the builder got, that he was saying care of, and what are we negotiating with him for?
I don't, I don't remember it, such a thing. There's no negotiations going on.
Well, listen, back at the tank, you'll hear someone said that you weren't negotiating with him.
Well, I could tell you anyway, there is no negotiations going on.
He still got the property and is going to build on it?
The original bidder, yes.
All right, now, resolution, I think it's twenty-six and twenty-seven, what was that?
Tom, that's the, the Roch property. Tom?
I'll start with twenty-six, that's the, to engage the services of a law firm to advise the township regarding the Roch property. There's a lot of outstanding issues with that. And that's all I can say.
Twenty-seven, same.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, as you're aware, there are, there arises a necessity for documents to be executed in connection with virtually every transaction that the town enters. And for evidence, hold up negotiations for any kind of transaction that may be ongoing with respect to that, that requires an exchange of documents, this authorizes a clerk and the, and the mayor and the manager, if necessary, to execute those documents, rather than come back every two weeks.
A week ago, not this Sunday, previous Sunday, I was going to my grandson's football game up in Louisville. I was going up Bellville Avenue, it was about two forty-five in the afternoon. There was this gentleman, he was physically impaired, crossing the street, we stopped letting him cross, and it took him quite a while to get to the center of the street. One police car was coming down the street, there were two young officers in it, talking to each other, and just zoomed by this guy. They could have hit him, he was in the middle of the crosswalk, crossing the street. I think you ought to tell your police officer to pay attention to the road and stop talking to each other in the car when they're driving, that man could have got hit. He was really physically impaired, but he was able to get across on his own, and I think something should be said to officers who watch when they're driving down this Bellville Avenue, which is a very busy.
Why, you need to let me see, is it, is it number four?
I couldn't because.
It's been a couple of months, but didn't have a meeting all month, I brought up the leak, another leak on Academy Street by a Coptic church. It was a leak, maybe two or three and four of water on it. It's more intense, the other day a friend of mine took a soda can top off, just dropped it down, two seconds, twelve ounces of water. Go look at it, it's thousands of, probably tens of thousands of gallons of water. And then we hear the water budget, we got a deficit in the water budget, we're paying north for that water. Why are these water leaks going, are we waiting for winter like Bellville Avenue, the fire by the Dairy Queen, which I brought up for six months before it got fixed? And all winter, there was ice forming there? Now, the only sewer is right here on the corner of Rutgers and Washington Avenue, so the water's coming all the way down Academy, all the way down Washington Avenue, until it gets to the sewer on the corner over here. And it's getting more, the leak is getting bigger and bigger, like, it's over two months.
Kevin, would you, I'm going to find out what it's called tomorrow.
Look, that, that was, you know, that's the answer, we always hear, but then I keep, I'll come back next month and next month.
Bill, do you have any answer, do you know what's going on with that water leak?
I'm not sure whether it's charged or not.
It's right in front of the Coptic.
I know where it is, but I don't know who's leaking, I'll find out tomorrow.
Well, the water's coming up, it's big, and you got to find it. Now, we couldn't hear too well, but in the beginning of this session here, it seems like you were looking to find some, do an investigation on the Board of Educational on corruption or criminal activity. I suggest you include this investigation, include what's going on with this illegal and corrupt phony senior project on Mill Street. Another phony sign just went up this past week, senior rental units. The law specifically states, and it's right in the municipal land use law, the units are especially designed for limited people who are age sixty-two's and older. This is not senior citizen housing. Why is he continuing to use the word seniors in all his literature? This is, it's embarrassing. In the beginning of August, I'm in a Home Depot lot in Tom's River, a guy sees my truck, Bellville, New Jersey, comes up to me, he said, you know, what the hell is going on with your town? I said, my daughter lost her house on the beach, I think, Chadwick Beach, I think he said, Sandy, she's trying to get twenty-four thousand dollars. Two years she can't get twenty-four thousand to rebuild, the whole side of her house got washed away. Why does your mayor give ten million dollars to a guy at senior project in Bellville? So we're embarrassed down there. Then it's in the newspaper, we jerk picture, Mr. Mayor, and Governor Christie, Starlet, who does the article, about the phony senior citizen housing in Bellville. Then, this past Sunday, in the record, Professor Bridget Harrison, I don't know if you know her, she does an article all the time, she's doing an article about the incompetent, incompetent spending of the Sandy money. And what does she bring up? You know, many. of the Sandy money. And what does she bring up? You know, many victims who saw him standing objected to the manner in which the Christie administration has distributed Sandy relief money. Remember the senior citizen development in unaffected Belville built with Sandy money? It's all over the state, the embarrassment of what's going on here. Uh, we've had three Starletter articles about this incompetence, it's not senior housing, and you keep taking that land, and I believe that subdivision that took that property out the Franklin Street was because that was a landlocked piece of property, and under municipal land use law, you can't build on a property that does not abut a street. So, the corruption goes on in Belville. And then we have our loving county attorney...
You know, I dislike the word corruption. If you have a problem, go to prosecutor's office, I'm sure they'll do an investigation on us. We'll say we're mad, you used the word corruption. You use the word corruption, go down to prosecutor's office, go to the Attorney General's office, and let's see where the corruption in the Attorney General is.
Mayor, if you look up west, there's six or seven definitions of the word corruption, okay?
Let's, let's see if it fits one of them.
Listen, well, because we're dealing in Belville here, and we have a town attorney keep standing up and say, "It was vacant property for eighty years when we all know it was a recreation site and a picnic area."
And it was never used as a picnic area. I've been on the...
Excuse me.
No, no, listen, you listen to me now.
Go ahead, I'll listen to your phony statement.
For thirty-three years, I never, never saw anybody picnicking out here.
Well, let me tell you something, let me tell you something, Mr. Mayor. If you were the chief of police, then you weren't competent if you didn't know that picnic was taking place there. And then several occasions, there was police officers stationed there.
That is the chief of police's problem, to go check where the picnic area is on.
No.
You're right.
When you had two police officers there, you should know where your men are. It's not a big department. When you're a chief, you ain't any chick man.
The police department should be checking on picnic.
Don't, look, don't tell me I attended some of those picnics. You know, remember the barbecue things that were built there?
No.
The tables that were in there? Well, you know, it's unbelievable, Mayor, it's unbelievable.
We're unbelievable.
Yeah. Then, then we have, you know, and you gotta get it to your planning board. And, you know, I and two other residents...
You got two more minutes, Ben.
Yeah, well, take a minute.
And I'm giving it to you.
I and two other residents hired an attorney one time when, up at Soho there, the senior system by Mr. Grogan, he was gonna do age forty. It was wrong because we bought the same statue, and we did hire an attorney, and the attorney told the, and the board told him he couldn't build them. So, he came back to the board and says, "Okay, I'm gonna make it age sixty-two and older." And then he built them. You know what he built, and then what he did, he went back to the zoning board and asked to make a market rate, and the zoning board says, "Yes, sir, anything you want," and they approved it. That's corruption. It may not be where you can prove money transfer hands, but that's another form of corruption, incompetent management. Now, this is our zoning board, and these are the kind of things that, that's killing us. And I don't wanna bring it up, but you know how many of the older senior citizen projects that we had in Belville that never came to fruition?
And you were one of them.
And, you know, Mr. Mayor, you could've been a hero. You could've been, and the council, if you would've listened to me and the way...
Of course, of course, we would've had to listen to you.
The Wayes Street Garage, if you made it senior citizen housing with a Belville senior citizen authority, it would've, it would've taken one year to build, you probably could have about fifty units there, one block through Town Hall, you, you guys would've been, the kids, your feet would've been kissed by the seniors for it. And it wouldn't have cost any money, you wouldn't have to go through all this stuff. So, retire, stop that crazy development over there, because there's another statute, an ordinance that says age-restricted housing, Matthew Foxer, the state comptroller, did a study. The state is inundated with age-restricted housing, and at that time, he said it'll take twenty years or more to take that up. So, what happened, the legislature did to a lot of these units that were built and couldn't sell? They passed a stat, a, a, a law. And the law, let me see what I got it. And the law says, anybody who built age-restricted housing, if you can't sell them, oh, we'll let you convert them to regular housing units. But yet, they got all the approval for age-restricted housing, less parking and the less restriction they being on. So, I hope this ain't gonna happen here.
Well, I'm sure our zoner will have some, if they try to do that, I'm sure our zoner will...
Well, I just gave you an example, our zoning board don't, don't, don't care. I mean, look what they did up there.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that.
Well, look, that's fact. And I don't know, you know, there's no longer senior citizen housing.
Your time is up.
He came to testify, I'm gonna build sixty-two and up, and then he goes back to the board, let him, "What the hell, you don't wanna do it no more, thank you."
Thank you, Ben. I'm gonna give you a chance to rebuttal, Mr. David.
Well, I'm going to, since this statement was made, and it was an incompetent statement, I'm gonna make very clear that it was. He came with his attorney, Mr. Gashian, I'll leave him mention the attorney's name, and he had a law, a state law, that says you can change it. And when he came with the state law, I asked our attorney, Mr. Campbell, very qualified attorney, "Can I see the copy of this law?" And I will read this copy of this law, and I point something out to him, and I says, "Well, how many units are you making low and moderate income? What are you talking about?" He says, "That's a condition of the law." And Mr. Mr. Gashian said, "I don't see it." I says, "Well, I see it, I have the final, well, I have the draft." It's, "Well, I guess they changed the draft." So, we had to adjourn the meeting for one month. He came back, he agreed that we were a hundred percent right, and in the resolution that was written on that case, there was, I don't know, if it was three or four apartments put in that were low and moderate income, and the rents that had to be charged under the statute for low and moderate income, and that's in the resolution. So, we just didn't give it away from him. It was a state law, there was nothing we could do, but in the law, it said, as a requirement to convert, you had to put a certain percentage, I don't know if it was twenty percent or whatever it was, as low and moderate income, and we wrote it right into the resolution with the rent levels that they had to put for those apartments. And that's the truth of what was done in that case. So, let's call spade a spade, and I'd say everybody's corrupt.
Thank you.
I, I had a quick question. Was, was there an income restriction on that as well? Because the funding, my understanding is the funding on this is not only age restricted, it's income restricted, so for thirty years.
It was originally, but then when he converted it, it went except for the amount that was low and moderate income. That had the amount restricted of the rent, not the amount of the income. Well, yes, it would have the amount of the income due, because you would have to come under the guidelines from all, low and moderate income.
But his was federally funded, was it?
Huh?
I don't think his was federally funded, that was privately funded, was it?
Uh, it was privately funded, yes. He, he didn't get the federal money because he, he wanted to convert.
Right, this is federal funding, so, I mean, you have the restriction.
As I remember, it was private, but because it was already approved as mod, as lower as a senior citizen income, and then he went to change it under state statute, there was that restriction in that you had to set aside a certain percentage for low and moderate income, and we wrote that right into the resolution with the amounts he could charge for rent on the low and moderate income.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Statute is that's twenty-five seventy-seven for senior, he's wrong.
You're finished.
Well, I'll write him a letter, he'll have to respond to an offer request.
You're finished, you're finished.
Jeff Mattingly, Fifty-Six Walnut, um, tonight I speak as the proud president of the Belville United Coalition. As you all know, well know, certainly on the council, we held our first annual candidates forum at the senior center by the invitation of the two seniors groups, and we'd like to thank the council, the town manager, the Board of Education also, who participated and aided in the process, and particularly Florence Pentol, who isn't here tonight, who was a great aide in helping us set up and take down and put, put everything back together to her liking, and we think it was a great success. We're very happy with it. I see that the council's considering now the cable broadcast of the meetings. It's on the agenda, I wanna commend you wholeheartedly for that. I would hope that you would also archive those meetings on the new and improved paper. I'd also hope that you'd archive those meetings as they occur on the town website as the new and improved model comes to pass, and I, I really think it's a wonderful thing to be fully exposed to your community that you represent, they're elected by, and the people who pay those taxes and children go to these schools. And I commend you all for it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You've been holding your hand up a long time, Johnny.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, with the implementation of the new streetscape, will the council be revisiting the signage for businesses? Because it seems that, you know, we have certain ordinances and it's up and down as far as there's banners, there's all kinds of web signings on the, on the sidewalk. Um, where are we going with that?
Don't that go to, don't that signs, the, the signs, signage go to...
It's a resolution, it has to go before Mr. DiLorenzo, and if they wanna go above it, it has to be brought before the zoning board. We, the last case we had with a sign was the property up on Belmont that we attended the opening, me and you, Mr. Mayor, of that, uh, professional building, that medical professional building. They asked for a bigger sign, and they had to come back to us.
Hope to answer your question.
There was some discussion about grants that, um, I believe Ms. Burke brought up, and then, uh, Mr. Longo at another meeting, and there was never any dissemination of that information, never hit the website, never any flyers or anything, I mean, what's that about? Or, how are we gonna, is there a flyer that's available?
Actually, uh, we're working to schedule a meeting at the senior center, allow the public access to this program.
What I'm saying, is there, are you gonna put out a flyer on that?
Well, the county puts out a flyer on it, we're just gonna host an event, and in fact, there was only some county...
Kevin, I thought you were gonna do a, a robocall on that.
We're working on a date to do that.
Yeah, because we, we need to inform the people, there, it's more than even monies for their fixing their homes, there's so many things people can take advantage of, and you really should with the county.
Um, I was in the high school today, and, uh, ironically, just by accident, and again, the computers have been down since Friday, they have no phones, uh, attendance is being taken manually, and one employee let me know that there was a student that had been out for a month, and they don't even know what the story is.
They'll tell you something to go to school.
The place is a mess. The place is a mess, it, it really is. Um, and I don't, I, you know...
That's terrible.
I mean, I fear for my son to even be at that school with, in, in that, in that state of disarray, that environment. And you're talking about a thorough and efficient education and a positive productive environment on which somebody to learn. I'm telling my son, "Keep your cell phone on you if there anything happens, you know, don't hesitate to call the police or the fire department, because you can't depend on the teachers being able to communicate back to the, to the, uh, the office." And then, I was there, I dropped my son off, he was late this morning, I dropped him off at eight o'clock, I had to double back, so I gave him something that I needed at eight fifteen. There was one person in the office dealing with sixteen students at eight fifteen that were late on a Monday morning. So, from eight o'clock to eight fifteen, how many students did she have to process? There's no one answering the phone, oh, no, I'm sorry, no one answered her phones, because the phones weren't ringing. Okay? So, what if there's an emergency situation where a parent needs to get in touch with their student? This needs to be addressed. I commend the council, I commend you to try to find of, of some type of an environment where parents and other people that have expertise in this area of damage control of, this is, this is unreal, this is unreal. Um, I said I was gonna be short, because I don't watch the game too much. They say give honor where honor is due. I saw a picture of, uh, the councilman, uh, Longo, with, uh, he had a grant, um, a check for a grant. It was in a Belville Times, I also saw it on Facebook. Now, I don't know, were you even a councilman at the time? Because I believe, I remember talking to you, and we were going over some of the things for Stevens Street, you know, a while back, so, were you even a councilman at the time? I mean, how did this occur that you had, you got the check?
I'm happy next time.
Go ahead.
In my packet was a letter from the county, and I presumed the rest of the council got the same letter that said there was gonna be a presentation on a certain day, a certain time, in Turner Bagso, and you were invited to go. So, I went, and I was the only one that was there. So, county executive called me up and gave me the check.
Yeah, okay.
I, I don't, I don't think I took credit for anything other than attending the event.
No, it says I got...
I didn't even take, I didn't even take credit for that, I just...
No, it says I, it was my great honor to receive the check for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the county, at least once will be used. Uh, I guess it's all an interpretation, it could be perceived that, okay. Good thing you were in attendance, okay. Um, many people, uh, and this is addressed to you, Mayor Kimball, as well as you, uh, councilman Longo. Yeah, well, but stop setting your head. Many people, friends, folks on Facebook, not even knowing them, I know I have over a thousand friends, and, uh, you know, Mr. Longo, uh, your position on council is at best suspicious circumstances, you know, after Nikosia with the March fourteenth thing, but we're not gonna go there. I ask you, are you truly a friend of Mayor Kimball? Mayor Kimball, is that truly your friend? Or is this an inaccurate portrayal of your relationship?
You wanna go first, then? No, I'll go first, and then you can answer it. Uh, the only thing I could tell you is, no, I am not Mr. Longo's friend, okay? We were at the same grand opening together, we took a picture together. I, I don't go on social media, I, I don't put anything on Facebook or the forum. Evidently, what I'm hearing around town is that Mr. Longo had me, had it on his Facebook, a picture of us, and then he put my friend, uh, Mayor Kimball. Uh, I, Mr. Longo was a colleague of mine up here, but not a friend. That's the only way I can answer it.
I was being respectful to the mayor, because I also congratulated and thanked the owners of the ShopRite, the Suburb Magic Chamber of Commerce, so it was sort of a display of familial respect. So, I apologize for calling my friends.
It just seems that Facebook is a tool that many people use to, uh, propagandize the position at once. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Capitelli, I live at eighty-six eighty-eight Maple Street, and I've contacted a member of council on this issue before. Uh, we had problems with the bar was screened from us, and right after they were acquitted of just about everything except that one ticket for fifty dollars, a fifty dollar fine, uh, that weekend, Friday night, they had a great party in that bar, and it was extremely loud. I live diagonally from that bar, my bedroom shakes, literally shakes, and I'm not joking. I can't sleep, it's rough. I have cancer, and it's hard. I need to rest at times. Mr. Menakini, Frank Menakini, lives down the block from that bar, he could hear it. My other neighbors can hear it, I have a neighbor with me who hears it, which I gotta also, I think, because I don't know why to speak here, it's so bad. It's, it's outrageous. That Friday night, after that meeting that you had, what, nine, three forty in the morning, they were in front of my door, out of the bar, bull crap, loud. I was up, I spoke to a member of council that evening, prior to that, I called the police at ten thirty at night. At ten thirty at night, there was a car with people from the bar in, men and women, in the backseat and in the front seat. Music out of that car, I can hear behind my house. The car was bouncing, if you get my drift, okay? This is my street, there were kids on the street, it's ten thirty at night, this shenanigans is going on. My other neighbor across the street from me, Mr. Priscilla, who owns that large property, the demolition service, I took pictures I have on my cell phone, if you'd like to see.
I have pictures, too.
Soda cans, beer bottles, and condoms, okay, in his yard, that he closed the gates on his garage, so nobody could park in there. When the maid goes in there to clean his office, sometimes she doesn't lock... When the maid goes in there to clean his office, sometimes she doesn't lock, they, they park in there. It's not a good environment for, for nobody, nobody. I have a letter here because she wouldn't make it, from the person who lives right next door to that bar, and she has three small children, you can imagine what that's like on a weekend with three small children. This neighbor has three small children. The neighbor directly next to me has three small children. There are fights that go on outside that bar. There's urination in a walkway that's now boarded up. Ramon, who lives directly across the street from Marie Burke, another neighbor who was going to come for the last time when we canceled the meeting because of a problem here in the courtroom, he, at two thirty in the morning, found two Indian people that left the bar peeing on his, on his porch, okay? He had to come out and wash his porch at two thirty in the morning because he didn't want it to smell. This is disgusting, it shouldn't be continuing, the bar is loud, I have to say, they got wind somehow of me gonna be here, okay? Somehow they got wind, because this past weekend was the quietest I've seen it.
Yep.
For the first time.
That is true.
In a very long time. I'm sure it's gonna continue, this, I'm not gonna tolerate it, if I have to go over there and do something myself, I'm not gonna tolerate it, I'm gonna wind up getting arrested, okay? Because this is a bad situation, really bad.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question to ask Mr. Capitelli. Do you swear that I sent you to this meeting?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I dealt with another member of his council.
Okay.
In another way.
What went on there was an utter disgrace and I got a twenty-five dollar fine. I'm fighting this for yours and I'm disgusted.
I will say this very loud right here.
Disgusting.
I have not spoken to Marie.
Right, he, actually, we're mayor, yes, that's right, we're mayor.
I, I have not spoken to her.
That's the truth, thank you.
Mr. Capitelli, can I? I wish every time there's a noise complaint or any other type of complaint, you would...
We call, we don't call, right?
I call, he calls, there's no shame.
Let me finish, if we, if we, when a licensing comes up, we don't have to renew our license because of the nuisance, or we could have the police send a nuisance complaint, but it's gotta be like more than once or twice.
How many, how many would you say?
I don't have any answer.
Well, I'm trying to tell you that we do call, we have to do pump, and it goes on, it's a disgrace.
Here's what happens, congregation comes outside the bar to smoke, they're supposed to only have three or four people outside the bar smoking, from what I know.
Then I won't dissell it.
Now, I don't have to dissell one.
They have ten, twelve people, the door keeps opening and closing, not only is the crowd inside with the door closed, but when it opens, it's another story.
What about the urination in front of those little children out there?
Oh, God, my son is a New Jersey State Trooper. My son grabbed a guy in front of my house with his then-girlfriend, who he's now married to, grabbed him peeing on my tree in front of my house, and told him...
Did he make, did he make him complain against him?
My son let him go, and my son said to him that if he ever caught him on my block again, he will hit him with so many offenses, he don't wanna see that guy on our block anymore.
You see, that, that's a big help though, if, and I'm not blaming you son, but if anybody would see someone, we could describe him or the individual or make complaints, that's part of the nuisance that we can stop the license from, I mean, that's wrong.
I understand that, but my son didn't wanna overstep, he's a New Jersey State Trooper, he has things to do, he was visiting me on his time.
Yeah, but you're supposed to report everything, but it was our report, Mr. Mayor, about the gentleman urinating in front of my house.
Okay, but...
I reported it.
He has found beer bottles on his porch.
Disgraceful.
I found them on my porch, I find them in the gutter on the street where car tires run over them, I pick them up, and you know what I do? I put them on the bar's porch. They sell Indian brand soda, I'll show you the pictures of where those soda cans are all over Mr. Priscilla's property.
I think we get the picture right.
Yeah.
Then, I apologize, I get excited when I talk to this bar.
Could we just increase the, the ton of patrol and... And if we, you know, just go, thanks, maybe tell the chief to make sure we have enough evidence to support the, the license.
I went as far as inviting a member of council to come to my house that night and just sit in my bedroom and see what it's like. That's how far I went. And then the next issue is, on our block, we live on the Heckle Street Speedway, we got cars going down.
It's on for tonight.
I know, thank you. I, I have to say, we got cars coming down street at almost three miles an hour, and this is going on at four o'clock in the afternoon. I'm, I'm looking for some means, I, I heard what you had to say about the speed bumps, and again, we have a lot of small children on the block, especially at four o'clock in the afternoon, and these guys are trying to get home from work at eight miles an hour going down our street. It's really dangerous for the kids because they goof on out this street. I yell at this kid all the time, get out of this street, you know, and it scares me because I know years ago, we had three kids die all at once that got struck by a car on our block, and that's the scary part of it. I asked to have the stop signs replaced, and I hope it happens, and quickly, and I know the speed bumps can be torn up now, but can we write on the street, show them?
Put the sign up.
Put the mobile message sign up, which will draw some attention to the application. Yeah, it's, it's scary, I don't wanna see these little...
Thank you, thank you.
Five copies on there?
Oh, there's a resolution, there's a resolution.
No, it's on there.
Okay.
I'm in on business.
Thank you.
Any motion?
Well, most of what I was gonna say, I live in seventy-nine Henkel Street, what I was about to say regarding the bar, the gentleman already has broken, regarding the field bottles everywhere, to answer that, what you, what you were saying before about calling officers at the scene, I did have several times, made a couple of calls, they came at the scene, and one of the gentlemen came from the bar, he actually was removed with his friends to leave the scene, that was all what the officers did, they didn't do nothing else regarding about that. It wasn't the first time, it'd been already like, what, third, maybe third time.
Do you know the date of that incident, sir?
This past Sunday, they had a fight there. And I called in the Belville Police Department, sure enough...
If there's police reports on it, we could...
Yeah, but it wasn't one from...
Not as long as there's reports, if that's the way I'm doing it.
It wasn't just one problem on that. There was another gentleman who actually came from the back of the, of the bar, jumping fences around, which I'm in the back porch, out the window, smoking a cigarette, I see this weird person, I don't know who it is, jumping from one fence to another, I called the Belville Police Department on the gentleman. I mean, I followed the guy to the corner, seen him turn around the corner, I told the officer, there, there he goes, he got a silver sweater over, and he's got black jeans. Why he did it? I just talked to your dispatcher, that's the question he gave me, why did he do it? What was that? I guess nothing. Because even when I called in for the fight, they, they showed up after they broke out the fight, everybody left with their cars. And with the lady here, I'm sorry, ma'am, what you say regarding about the high school, it is true, they've been having a lot of problems with their phones here. My son goes to Belville High, I had the nurse call me on my cellphone using her personal cellphone, for me to go to the school and pick up my son because he was running a hundred and three feet. Is it fair to her that she's using her own personal phone? No.
You know, we're gonna have our manager, we'll get in touch with the state monitor, Kev, I mean, you, see if we, what's going on, and then you could also tell them that we're thinking of putting a committee together to investigate the, I don't know yet, what's going on.
Gentlemen, ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the homeless in town.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, Penny Wells, E.P. Street. I have a question on the homeless in town because I'm very close to Washington Avenue, there's a lot of problems on Washington Avenue, including the litter, it's disgrace, the homeless hanging out with laundromats, sleeping on the dorm seat laundromat in the vestibule there, hanging out at the McDonald's, sitting there sleeping, hand handling at the Wendy's, hand handling at McDonald's, and use the code Belville Police and they say they, they can't touch them, they can't do nothing to them, they can't move them to north, they can't do this, they can't do that, but the taxpayers in town have to put up with it, and it, it's a disgrace. I mean, in my, in my neighborhood alone, between the foreclosures, the garbage from Quick Check, the street's not getting cleaned, and then I call the VPW, okay, and I get, oh, we'll send a street cleaner out there now, it's too late, street cleaning's over, street cleaning was over two hours ago, clean the street when it's supposed to be cleaned. I live around the corner from Quick Check, I get all the garbage in my hedges and in my street, you know? And to, and the liquor store across the street from town hall is another disgrace. The drunks sitting out in front of it, the benches should be taken up, they're peeing on the street there, the liquor bottles and everything else is a disgrace for the town.
Eddie, I'm not saying you won't, but I never saw anybody across the street peeing on the street.
Yeah, I was, Mayor, I went to see Georgiana one day.
If anybody did, I, I wish they would please call the police and try to...
I'm down there a lot because I go to see her.
Mr. Fenteth and I know you probably saw it, what I didn't see.
Everybody's telling they called the police, you keep telling, everybody out there, they called the police.
I came here for a totally different reason, but sitting and listening to everything that's been going on, and I've been to these meetings quite a few times, I'm sorry, my name's Diane Rockwell, I reside at four oh three Portland Street. I've been coming to these meetings about town development and residential properties and, and everything else, I've gone to board of ed meetings, and I'm not prepared, but I do know that the economic has not, is improved a little bit, but not enough. Homes in Belville are falling into foreclosure, being a homeowner of a multi-dwelling, it is very difficult to rent out our properties when one tenant's moved out because they can't afford it and everything else, our schools are overcrowded, and listening to different things going on and reading in the papers about residential property going down by school number one, residential property possibly going up by ShopRite, residential property possibly going up on Franklin Avenue, you know what, we're taking entirely too much time and effort worrying about putting residential properties in this town that we cannot support financially or in our school systems. We need to sit back and start being more responsible and taking care of our elders in this town, and I, I know quite a few, and quite a few that have been here and now are passed on, that never got to enjoy their lives here in town, and we need to be responsible for our elders, and as the board's starting to get older, where are you gonna go? Not all of us have two pensions in this town, not all of us have a pension of six figures, eight figures, there are people coming from north, Trenton, Jersey City, to come here, and you know what, it's falling apart, so with all developments that's going on, please be responsible, you know, find different things that are going on, don't flood our schools anymore, our school system's already at the bottom of, of the well. So, you know, this, not the reason why I came up to the meeting, but sitting and listening to the frustrations and everything that's going on, but it doesn't seem anybody's listening. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Any motion, close public here?
Councilmember Cazarelli, Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Shumelber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, move the dissent agenda. Yeah, one, eight, nine, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. One, eight, nine, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Resolution number one, I wanna, uh, voice, voice vote on, because I've taken off purchase order, one four oh two oh three one, I wanna vote on that purchase order by itself.
Can you repeat that number, please?
P.O. fourteen oh two oh three one. That's the payment to the Board Education. Thank you, I pass some gas money, I'm gonna give that number away.
What's the, what's the, what's on the one hat?
They gotta vote either the, the purchase order up or down.
Can we, can we, can we take the forty-five thousand off the top?
This is the money that the Board Education gets from the township, that we collect the taxes, and when people have tax appeals, we have to give them back their money, but the Board Education and the library board has, does not give nothing back, but besides that fact, they lost forty-four thousand dollars in gasoline since six or seven months ago. Now they got all the buses out, running around again, and they're getting more gas from us, I don't even know why we're supplying them with the gas, and I really don't care, but they lost forty-four thousand dollars, and I want the town to be paid.
I think we're gonna...
With regard...
I agree with Kevin, but if we do that, we're gonna put more of a...
I think conceptually, you're right.
Yeah.
And I think everything you're saying is correct, but I don't think you can withhold the payment.
Well, I don't withhold pay, I just don't vote not to pay them, they can all vote to pay them, that's their priority. Give the forty-four thousand dollars and I'll vote to pay them, and that's forty-four thousand dollars from, from six months ago, so God knows what they have accumulated during the summer and what they're accumulating now with bringing all the kids to school. I mean, can I go down there, fill up my car, and I'll pay them at the end of the year?
No, of course not.
Of course not.
Mr. Burdley, I, I asked that question a couple of months ago about whether or not we got paid, and everybody said that we got paid.
I remember everybody said we got paid, I checked the update.
You're the one who said it, you said you didn't care, now all of a sudden you care, you said to me. You said you didn't care, now all of a sudden you care they paid the gas.
I think we had a promise to get paid.
Yeah, we had a promise to get paid, like everything else in the Board Education pays up, nothing happened. Last year's value. This is this year's money, that's all this is.
I don't see how, how we can withhold it, and I, I'm more, I'm more concerned with what the monitor, how the monitor would address that.
Okay.
And, and certainly the monitor, having stepped into this unfortunate situation, is trying his best to undo it.
You know what we could do, and this is all we, what we're expected on the board, stop giving them our gas, because if they're paying at a lower rate, they're going to the gas station.
Well, then we're gonna get stuck with a higher bill. We're, we're gonna be paying, they're gonna be getting gas retail.
I probably can't afford that either.
However.
All right, so we're gonna have to talk to the monitor, but Kev, Kevin wants to go to his most, Kevin, I'm sorry, did anybody answer?
Kev, can you set up an official meeting with the monitor, not just the phone call? To make it a little more serious?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes, you did.
Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Shumelber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Resolution five.
Yeah, um, resolution five?
Eight.
Eight. I, I see that, I mean, this is, this is development too because they already accepted, but we accepted a nineteen ninety-one Army truck, I mean... I mean, we have army trucks down there now. The tires cost like three thousand dollars. The batteries cost a thousand dollars. I mean, why do we need these army trucks? I mean, I don't understand why we have them. I mean, it's not that we're getting them for free, that's irrelevant. You know, I'm the nut, I go over the bills, and the maintenance on these things and the prices for them. I mean, three thousand dollars for a tire is outrageous. They had to put batteries in one of the trucks, and the batteries were a thousand dollars a piece. We don't need these. I mean, we already accepted this thing, and I saw it in a parade the other day, but I'm voting no on this. I have, we have no need for army trucks, unless we're gonna start an army and house a police department.
What do we table it, Kevin?
It's already here. It's already here. It was in the parade the other day.
Can someone move it in second?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. The tier already-
I can make a suggestion, I think I know the truck that you're referring to.
Yeah.
And I think there has been recent public notice about vehicles like this, and I think going forward, Councilman Kennedy's words should be carried forward so that these type of vehicles, these immense vehicles that look more at home in the deserts of Afghanistan that are virtually impossible for people to climb into it.
It's not like that, but they sit there, and the battery goes dead, and then the battery won't hold a charge, then you're spending another thousand dollars on a battery. I mean, they're not even used every day.
That's, you know, perhaps the manager should discuss with the chief that the next time an opportunity comes up for Bellevue to get-
They shouldn't accept it through a council.
You're right, right. I mean, three thousand for a tire. My car ain't worth three thousand dollars.
They shouldn't accept it, no.
This type of a vehicle is, when I saw it, I would-
Yeah, it's like an ambulance or something, you know?
It's a massive, massive vehicle.
Where is it located now?
I'm sorry?
Where is it at?
Councilwoman, I don't know where it is now.
What about the other ones?
But it really looks like a, it's a scary looking vehicle. It's a scary looking vehicle.
Can we revisit this and send it back?
Well-
It's a nineteen ninety-one.
They probably gave it, they wanted to give it away.
They want to get rid of it, yes.
All right, pass it, Kevin.
Let's just send a memo down, Kevin, to the police chief, not to accept any vehicles that come to us first.
Put it out to bed, shall it? You're right, you have to get it.
Question number twenty-three.
Headshot number nine.
Question number nine, resolution-
Who's gonna second it?
Second.
I just want to say a few things. I know the last time that I tried to put constable on, I got defeated. I know Mr. Esposito's in the audience tonight, and he spent fifty dollars for his fee, and he did this and that, so I'm just saying, I am not against them having constables, and these two other gentlemen. This gives them more money that they can go out and make in these dire times, that's why I'm for it. So I guess we need a vote on it.
Okay, I think the last time we voted, the police chief, or definitely police chief-
Said we didn't need it.
There was no need for it, right. And I'm reading a statue on-
Yeah, I know, I read that.
You ready to talk?
I don't see the point. How's it hurting us?
Members in office show up, the power, the jurisdiction, and they show up the powers of the council, in all matters, rather than in the civil cases, courts and courts, but the police department does the same job, so.
No, they're not doing it, Mr. Man, they said. The police department is not performing that.
All right.
But let's take it off.
There's a question.
I'm gonna lose anyway, so it's a difference.
I tried. Kennedy?
No.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
No.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
No.
Mayor Kimball? Resolution's defeated.
Resolution twenty-three.
Twenty-three. I don't know if there are any representatives or members of the Silver Lake Baptist Church here this evening, but I just want to congratulate them personally as well on their one hundredth anniversary, because I have a very special connection to that church, in that in nineteen fourteen, my grandfather Joseph Longo was one of the founding members of that church. And I'm just very proud to be able to sit here and vote on this resolution a hundred years later. So congratulations to the church.
Make a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Move Resolution number twenty-eight?
Second.
Excuse me, councilminister, did you move twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, before that gets moved, I have to bring this to the governing body's attention. The council's liaison to the Historical Preservation Commission, with the unanimous support, I might point out, wanted to honor Mike Perone, whom we all know is a, not only a great citizen, but a real aficionado of Bellevue's history. I know sometimes he goes on at length, which I can relate to, but he's always informative, his heart is always in the right place. He has supported many, many times throughout the years at the library, the cemetery, the Fourth of July celebration, and so I talked to him after the Historical Preservation Commission had taken this action to recommend to the governing body that he received this honor and that a position be established. And it just showed me what kind of a man he is, that he declines the honor, not because he doesn't want it, or not because it may not be appropriate, but he, there's another individual that he wants to suggest to the governing body, an individual who has written books about the township of Bellevue. I think the gentleman's name is Norman?
Norman Price.
Yeah, Norman Price.
He's a historical society guy.
And he was, Mr. Perone, I think, was really honored by, I'm sure we're gonna, a unanimous vote tonight, but he feels that the honor belongs to somebody else, so I'm gonna ask the governing body to defeat this, and then we'll talk to Mr. Perone and see if Mr. Price could be honored. But I think it says an awful lot about Mike Perone, that he would decline this honor in the, and step aside for someone whom he feels to be more worthy.
My question is, why can't we create it? It doesn't cost anything, there's no salary or compensation, and then the position would be there, and if he desires to have it, he can then be appointed to it, or whoever, if he turns it down, maybe Mr. Perone would be interested. But then you have it.
Do we need a new resolution?
And it doesn't cost anything, it doesn't-
Yeah, we need a resolution, because Mike's name is on it.
I thought, I thought his name was taken out, I didn't see his name. Why don't we amend it to his name? It doesn't have his name.
Do I have the authority of this appointed committee to-
Well, that was another, you know, it's essentially an honorary designation. But, you know, it's not a paid position or anything like that. What I'd like to do is take a better look at this, because the word shall is in it, and it seems to require the historian to do something, so maybe to-
I make a motion, we table it.
I second it.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Move Resolution twenty-nine?
Second.
No, I just want to table it. Make a motion to table it.
Second.
Quick little vote.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
No.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution's tabled.
Move Resolution thirty?
Second.
Just want a voice vote.
You know we had some restrictions on certain things that we could and could not do, I what can we do and what can't we do?
Well, by law, you only can have two a year. This person was having one every other day up there. Second of all, the neighbors are going crazy when she has it up there. And then they sent Dave Maddley, he left already, but he sent them their bank statement, because he opened the bank statement for whoever runs this. The Athletic Council, whoever runs it. I mean, I've never seen a hand typed bank statement in my life. Usually you have to get the pages of the bank statement and give them out, but they made their own bank statement, they have what they do with the money and all, but it's not from an official bank, you know? And so I checked with Frankie today, to the manager, and they never applied for even a license to have these up there. Are they special, that other people in town can only have two a year and have to go get a permit? I mean, the permit's ten dollars, you know, and God knows what she makes, I mean, or what she pays the Athletic Council. I mean, if she has two hundred tables and she charges a minimum of forty dollars, that's eight grand she's taking. And then she's gonna give the Athletic Council five hundred or a thousand dollars for using the town property and school property up there? I mean, so she's making six or twelve thousand, six or twelve thousand every month, the school's making two thousand, the town's making nothing, and you can't go up and down the street, the neighbors are complaining, so I'm against it. I'm not for letting them go back to it. No, go ahead.
Can we table it?
Sure. Make a motion.
Can we make a motion to table it?
Second.
Make a run, go into a contract.
Second. No, can't talk about it.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion. Make a motion, move the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor?
I have an ordinance to amend, revise general ordinances for the township of Bellevue, Chapter eight dash six A, four-way stop sign intersection, is to put the four-way stop sign back at Heckle and Geraldo Street, all four directions.
I second the motion.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
On the board, we passed over, I'd like to take the resolution to take the council meetings off the table.
Second.
Councilmember Cossarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
No.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
No.
My new business is, number one, I'm very sad about the constables, but I guess so be it. Now, we spoke a lot about the Board of Education, and we have a new person there, we have a monitor there, so I just don't understand, if all these things go wrong, why isn't he trying to fix them? So that's number one. Number two, regarding the bar on Heckle Street, this is an ongoing situation. I agree that some of the neighbors did not call. I know that a lot of them did call. What went on, and then, of course, they had a meeting here. I was outside, and a lot of people from Heckle Street did attend, and the council voted, only to give them a twenty-five dollar fine. So I just hope, or whatever it was, fifty, even a hundred. But what they did, they ruined our whole neighborhood there with those guys urinating and doing what they were doing, so I think the next time we should look into it further before we let them off the hook. Thank you.
I believe we did ask for evidence and stuff, but not a lot.
You know what happened with the evidence?
That's what I think the problem is.
Well, they said that I called him a name. Well, that was in the reporting, too.
That's true.
Yeah, whatever.